I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School Committee to order. It's, what, 6:01? And if we could, I just want to, yes, we could stand for the pleasure of it. Here's to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to use my cell phone right now. And I did want to announce that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with Templeton Community TV, or TCTV, and it's provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. It's also out on Facebook and YouTube and whatnot. The first order of business is the approval of minutes. We had to approve, we still have to approve the meeting minutes of June 26th. Mrs. Barney has finally gotten through the meeting. They're just not in a presentable format for the committee to approve yet, so at the next meeting they will be approved, but she's finally gotten a chance to watch the meeting again and get everything recorded after having the computer decide it didn't want to save her work. Yeah. I would take a motion when someone is ready to approve the meeting minutes of July 24th.
I have, that's the one where the people spoke?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a couple of names that are wrong.
Okay, perfect.
She had Gail, dot, dot, dot. It's Noel. Yep. And Mary Enstrom. It's Mary and then it's Enstrom. E-H-N-S-T-R-O-M, Highland F. We have Mary Anstrom. But it's Mary Enstrom. You were close.
Perfect. We knew someone was going to know the answer to those ones. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I noticed, I guess.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve the minutes with the name changes as recommended by Mrs. Kosel when someone would like to make that motion.
Some move.
I have a motion, I have a second, and I have a second. Any discussion or any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. I would then take a motion to approve the minutes of July 30th.
Some move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I do have a second. Anyone need just another minute to go through them? Okay, any comments or questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes unanimous. Next, I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Anyone want another minute just to go through them? This was just last week's meeting. Any comments, questions?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? We have one ab- explanation.
I wasn't here, so I'm going to abstain.
I wasn't here either, do we have to abstain? You don't have to abstain if you weren't here. It's not necessary to, but if you'd like to, you can abstain.
I wasn't here, so I have to.
Okay. So it's not unanimous because we did have one who abstained. Okay. Bills and payroll, I would entertain a motion to recommend that we accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
So we'll...
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes unanimous. Okay. Student representative. So I have James Hul, who is an incoming senior and the senior class president, here to give us an update of what's been going on through the summer.
Please excuse my bit of a slight pardon. I, you know, covering some double jobs every day, so. The summer is really starting to wind down now. There's only three weeks until school's in session. I'm sure everybody's really excited about that. Band camp is coming up this Friday. There's the Rookie Day at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the full band camp is August 19th to December 3rd from 8:00 to 6:00. Freshman academy will be held on August 30th from 9:00 to 5:00. The National Honor Society has been volunteering at various town meetings for babysitting. The cheerleaders attended the Mathew and Schuze Festival to assist in run games, and some students from the Student Drive Group Council were volunteer superheroes. The cheerleaders also cheered on the cyclist at the Pan-National, which was really cool. The Dominican Republic Service Learning Trip Group helped their first fundraiser, Carla Sanz Vance Auto Parts in Gardener, which was a success. A few of our Barre Tons of students attended and completed the Drum and Mazer Academy at UMass Amherst. And I would like to take time to publicly thank all the custodians and maintenance crew in our district for working hard to get all our buildings and tip-top seats in their return of students.
Great job, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have parents by Mr. Rick Molden, our Buildings and Grounds Facilities Manager, who's going to give us the state of the state when it comes to our building and grounds.
Everything's fine. Well, relatively, everything's fine. Compared to last year, where we had issues with insurance issues and water damages, and I would say that we came through very unscathed over the last 12 months. It's been nice to have a regular maintenance year, but if I believe all the social media, I guess there's a building getting built up this street up here. It seems to have consumed quite a bit of my time, but that's okay. This building itself, and Phillipston itself, we've been going through the normal maintenance this summer. We've all ventilated, you know, all filters have been changed. We're doing a lot of painting. We painted this room, a lot of rooms around. We have replaced this year, this summer, three more large rooms with carpeting rather than the tile. We find that carpeting has worked out excellent. We started that three years ago. And we did the middle school music room this year, a couple of the classrooms up in the high school area. If you ever get a chance to walk down to the middle school music room, go down and take a look at that. It really made a difference. I know the music instructors have been in there this summer and they're absolutely loving it. We did do some siding outside. We sided, the concession stand was sided, the fieldhouse down on the athletic field has been sided to match Gansett colors. We finished doing some paving out back. Transitioning teachers all around the school here. We've moved, I think in particular, like the robotics class, which is down by central office, he was taking up two classrooms. We moved him, all his shelving and all his cabinets up into the high school. He's excited about it. The classroom came out really well. Getting down into Baldenville, we've pretty much got that closed up. Matter of fact, Anne Marie will have a surplus list for you tonight to go over and approve, I hope. And when that, oh, not tonight?
No, not tonight. It's not.
Okay, so we won't have that tonight.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. And when that, when that gets cleared, we will finish with Baldenville. Phillipston, we ended up carpeting four rooms up in Phillipston. The old carpets up in the old section of the building were just, I mean, they were awful. So I had enough money left in my budget that we funded two of the rooms. The selectmen paid, or the town paid for the other two rooms. Those have been completed, so those are done. I know that Phillipston, those rooms have been repainted. They're, you know, very happy with what's gone up there. I'm still waiting for the selectmen to give me the A-OK. I know a town meeting, they approved HVAC units for Phillipston. I don't know what's going on with that, to be honest with you, if that's a little bit up in the air right now, so. But I think if they don't do something, they're going to have some issues this winter because the HVAC units up on that section, the new section of Phillipston, they're, they're being held together with Band-Aids and bubble gum, basically, so. We are in, we're in great shape at the new school. We've transitioned around some custodians. The Baldenville custodians have transitioned up to new school. They're there already. We will have, we had money in the budget for another full-time position, which we need for that school because it is such a big school, and that's been filled. And that was actually one of the custodians from Phillipston is going to transition over to the new school, and then her position will be filled over in Phillipston. Hers was a 20-hour position over there. Where I was up, I've been up through there just about every day. I'm up in that school, and it looks, and I'm sure you've been in there, it looks fantastic inside. I mean, it's, the final cleaning crews from Fontaine are in there right now. They're doing the final touch-ups. Teachers, I was talking to teachers up there today, they're just pumped, you know. They're setting up their rooms and they're, they're very excited. So this building, I don't see any major faux pas's going on over the next year unless Mother Nature doesn't agree with something, but we're, we're in pretty good shape right here right now, and we will have, we haven't done the hallways as far as stripping and waxing it. We'll wait till after town meeting. All the classrooms will be done by the end of this week, and then next week we'll knock off the hallways, and we'll be ready to go right after Labor Day. Any questions?
I do have a question. You were talking about the HVAC at Phillipston School. Is that in need of repair or is it in need of replacement?
In need of replacement. And at the town meeting, I had received quotes for the five units. I didn't go to town meeting, whereas my understanding was approved at town meeting. So that's not my call.
Yep.
And I haven't pursued getting it, getting the companies in place to do that yet, so.
Greg, I might just make a suggestion, just send out an email, you mean, to the board of selectmen, copy of the renovation committee, just to express your concerns and find out what the status is.
Yeah.
Okay?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Maybe CC the school committee as well.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think the concern is, is that with winter looming, winter is coming.
Yeah.
What type of lead time do we need to get those? I don't know how big the job is, you know, a one-day thing.
It's substantial. It's substantial. I mean, it's five big units up on that roof.
How much are they?
What's that?
How much is each unit?
How much is each, well, the five, the five units can be roughly $38,000.
And is it going to interrupt teaching while they put these in? Because that's not a big...
Well, I had hoped that this was going to get done during the summer, I'd hoped, because obviously they're going to have to bring in a crane. These aren't small units. They told me that they can replace the existing units up there, so they don't have to change the footprint of the roof. They can take out the existing units, put in the, you know, the new units. I don't know what lead time is on these, you know. I would, I would, and I would guess probably, I'm going to guess probably six to eight weeks, because I don't think these are something you have in stock. I don't know that for sure. I might call up, you know, they may say tomorrow, yeah, go ahead and order. And I call them, the guy, and they may say, oh, they've got them stocked, but then again, they may say, we can't do it till November. I don't know, so.
And don't we have to have heat turned on by October 15th?
Yes.
And is that an issue?
Well, I mean, if, if it's cold, yeah, you've got to have heat turned on.
I'm going to assume it's going to be cold.
Nice weather, you don't have to. But you have to have accessible, going to keep the building at least, at least 65 degrees by, I think it's October 15th.
We'll just bring in a lot of space heaters.
Yeah. Yeah. Give every kid a blanket, right?
I am kidding.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm, that concerns me. This concerns me, so. And I, I don't know where we stand with it right now. I know that the administrator up there has asked me for other contacts. I have given him the contacts that I've talked to, you know, because I did talk to three different companies, basically. Not just give one guy a shot, I've given three a shot, so, anyway.
Could we have a follow-up reporting on that?
Just going to say, I think maybe if Kate, you would take that when Chris comes back and maybe if he can escalate this on behalf of, maybe if you want to send an email.
Oh, I'll do, no, send an email tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and then if we can get this escalated. You know, my, my two big concerns is obviously the disruption to the classroom day. If this happens during school, will that be, and the second piece is if, with winter coming, if there is a lead time and we don't have the appropriate heating in the building, that could be an issue, and that issue could compound itself to frozen pipes, I mean, all these other things that we know could happen.
Yep.
So yes, if we could follow up on that and maybe get a response and see where we are.
I'll, I'll get a note out tomorrow morning, I'll CC, so.
Great.
All right.
Any other questions? I would just like to say thank you to yourself and to all of your staff. It's always fun coming through here during the summer and seeing all these things happen. When I came in today, I said, these, the hallway looks so strange.
Yeah.
Nothing on the walls and whatnot, but your staff is, you know, top-notch at turning this building around over the summer, so please extend our thanks and appreciation.
Just so I can put it on record, they have been fantastic this summer. I can't say enough for what they've done. They've, and it's my third or fourth summer here, and I have not had any infighting that I seem to have had in the past, and it's just, it's been fantastic, you know, coming in, so it's been, it's been good, so.
Great.
Told them I'd buy them all pizza if they get it all.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. Next up is our public input. I don't know if we have anyone in the audience who wants to come and say anything today? Pretty quiet out there. We'll move on. NDEA, I don't see our rep out there since it is summertime. I hope she's getting the last few days to herself. Business manager's report.
So I've included the final June, which we had basically talked about in June, and we did the transfers in June. So if you look at those sheets, you can see that the accounts that were in red, we did the transfers and covered those. What I wanted to bring your attention to was the July one, and I just wanted to point out, if you look at the bottom line of what was spent in July, I just want you to notice that we stayed well under our allotted 1/12 limit. We have a $1.6 million a month limit, and that carries over what we didn't spend in July, now carries over to August and so forth, so that will help us in the fall as we get through, start all of our teacher payrolls.
Just a question on that. I know the treasurer has to prepare, I'm assuming, the monthly assessments to the towns. Are they, do they pay us monthly based upon that bill?
Yes.
And have we been, did we receive those payments yet?
I have not heard from her that we have.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, that's good news that we are under so that we have monies to carry forward when we start with our big payrolls when the teachers return.
Yep.
She would have notified you if she didn't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions for Anne Marie on any of those numbers? All right. Okay, next up is the FY '20 budget. So we've had some interesting things happen. The state finally decided to approve a budget number. That was very exciting. I think on the 27th or the 28th, the governor signed into, signed the budget number with, it was out of the compromise committee between the House and the Senate, and he only did, I think it was two vetoes, non-monetary, it was just some language changes. So all of the dollars that were appropriated in the, in the joint committee between the House and Senate were approved, and in that, there was some additional ed funding monies that were appropriated. These monies unfortunately didn't really hit our bottom line at all, as everyone's probably tired of hearing me say, we are hold harmless, which means anytime they grow the foundation budget formula numbers, it doesn't impact our end result because we are hold harmless. As our enrollment declined, they didn't remove the funding based on the higher enrollment. We're guaranteed to get that, so they should only give us this, but they're giving us this, and even though we bumped up a little, it's not enough to make the difference up. So unfortunately, we saw a minimal increase in our cherry sheet number. I think it was...
About $12,000.
About 12, yeah, it was, it was minimal. So I want to stress again, because if anyone's seen my comments out on some social media sites, at the Support Mass Regional Schools Facebook group, it's a good, great group to join with some good information. The state continues to push out more ed funding, and it doesn't impact us at all because they forget anybody west of 495 might need funds. And the other piece that's, that really concerns me on top of all of that is the fact that they're so focused on the foundation budget that they haven't even looked at what it's going to mean to our local municipalities who ultimately have to fund the school for whatever the state doesn't give. And I'm really concerned that even if funding comes through, when the assessments to the local towns are then pushed out, that our towns are going to be faced with a bill that they can't support either. And if you're only going to allow a 2.5% levy limit increase, you can't force a minimum contribution of 5%, 6%, 10%, 12% on a town and expect them to manage that within that 2.5 levy limit increase. It can't be done, and that is a big concern for me. So, you know, we'll continue to advocate and get our message out. Unfortunately, the problem is, is we don't have a lot of legislatures that represent the districts in this position. So when it gets to the floor, if it doesn't impact, one, the larger volume of students, which happen east of 495, they look at where's the biggest bang for a buck. And unfortunately for us, we get lost, and that's a big, big concern. So that's just my, my soapbox stand once again. I do know that we've been asked some questions, and I'm, I'm going to pass out a couple of sheets. Anne Marie's been working on a few things, and I've put some stuff together because I have my own way of looking at things that, so if we compare those two sheets, if you want to pass copies. And then here's a couple for, we'll send those down to Kate and Anne Marie so they know what we're talking about. Susan, I don't have one more copy for you, I'm sorry, but I'll get the electronics and we can add these to the records. So what I did is I just kind of summarized some things so it was easier for me to make sense of, and it was basically taken off of Anne Marie's income statement, and the sheet that has the yellow on it speaks to the recommended action that those guys have put together for this evening. Based on the change of the cherry sheet, we're able to have a slightly larger amount of receipts from the state, which then impacts the allocations and the assessments to the towns. So the portrait-sized sheet, you'll kind of see it, it breaks it down. If we keep our current certified budget number of the $19,786,889, which is that last of the three columns there, we have our state aid and our other receipts. You'll see our cherry sheet number now says $9,951,444, which is up slightly from $9,938. So again, that was $13 million, $13,000. We have other reimbursements that are estimated by the states that we've kept those level, and I'll let Anne Marie speak to those in a second. Charter school reimbursement, regional transportation reimbursement. We have our E&amp;D at $500,000 that we've pledged, that we're maintaining, and the Medicaid that we're reimbursed of $300,000. And I just want to segue to a minute about E&amp;D, because I know there were some questions that I've seen posed out there. Our E&amp;D number that was certified for last year was 630...
635,000.
635,000 and change, of which $500,000 we are giving back to the district to lower the expense base and assessments to the towns. So I think there was some misunderstanding. It looked like we may not have been using any of that. We're using $500,000 of that 635 to reduce the allocations and assessments to the towns. So that's an important factor for people to understand. The reason that we don't use all of it is that if we have something come up, most notably what happens is we may get an out-of-district placement for a special ed student. We may have some transportation costs for that population. It can be a lot of money, so that allows us to have some funds to pay for these items. So we do like to keep a little bit of money around. And again, if we equate that to free cash from the towns, we try not to use it for ongoing expenses, but as you see, the bulk of our E&amp;D is going to ongoing expenses. Anyway, continuing down, the numbers are based upon the statutory methodology for assessments to the towns, and I did want to make a note that because we're going to a district-wide town meeting, we must use the statutory method of allocation, which is what we normally use anyway. So we don't use any alternative method. We do use the statutory method. If we had a different methodology, we would be forced to use statutory. And all that says is the towns pay their minimum contributions. Whatever is left over that needs to get funded gets split to the towns based upon our student enrollment population. And that's based off of October 1 of...
Last fall.
2018.
18.
Thank you, I forget what year I'm in. So what I tried to lay out here is what does it look like and how does it impact the towns? So we've got our total assessments to Templeton and Phillipston, and you'll see a number underneath for what Templeton, the additional appropriation needed. When we certified our number way back in March, the initial number, if everyone remembers, it was just under $1 million. It was $988,000 that the town was looking for an override. We then cut the budget, and it was $487,337. Because now, two things have happened. One, the cherry sheet came out and was finalized, so we had a little bit more income, and minimum contribution somehow changed. I'm not sure how the, why the state did that, because typically they're on two factors that shouldn't have modified, but this is what the state told us. It looks like Templeton's minimum contribution, what does it say here? It went up just a little bit, but net-net, with the cherry sheet increase, that the amount above the $6,491 that was approved at the special town meeting is $473,917. So that's the difference between what Templeton has approved as an appropriation and what we're asking for. On Phillipston's side of the house, it ends up being actually less than what Phillipston funded in its general fund. Phillipston had passed a general fund funding of $1,657,099, but then they also did an override based on the initial ask we had. Now, we don't need any of that override money based upon what we're looking for. We actually need $1,640 less than what they had appropriated for us out of the general fund. So these are the numbers as they stand today. We do need to decide if we want to stay with our number. We have the district-wide town meeting next week. We have the number of $19,786,889 is our certified budget. The assessed, the certified assessments to the towns have changed slightly based upon minimum contribution changes and the additional cherry sheet income, so we can choose to recertify the assessment numbers. I would say we recertify everything just to get it all done again and bring those forth to the, the district-wide town meeting. The warrant article is the total budget, so that would stay the same based upon these numbers. As a committee, we could also decide to do something else. So I want to put that out there to the committee to see what thoughts or ideas you have as far as the budget and how we want to proceed.
Mary?
Yes.
I'm a little confused on the, I know that the appropriation for Templeton changed, and it's now more, but how much more is it from what it was?
So it's, it's less. The minimum contribution went up slightly, but the overall amount that we need from them is now $473,917.
Yep.
It was $487,337.
Okay.
So it did go down.
Okay.
It went down about $14,000, somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay. I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, no, I think I was talking...
That's okay.
...to us too, so. It's all up here and it just doesn't come out.
I would think we would reali-, we would reassess with the $473, not that it's a huge number, huge change, but I don't know why we wouldn't do that. I don't know. You know, it's $14,000 difference, but it's still something.
Yep.
There's some issue now with the insurance with the...
There's some issue now with the insurance for the elementary schools. I'm not sure who's paying that at this point. Sorry.
Better not.
What my understanding is, is historically, the towns, for whatever reason, have always picked up the insurance on the buildings. In our district agreement, it does say we will pay for the insurance, but historically the towns always have. I don't know if the town budgeted for it or not, but they are pushing back on us this year to pick up the cost of the insurance, which was not in our budget because historically that's not what we had done. Do we have an estimate on...
Yeah, it's approximately $30,000 to add Templeton. We've always done the contents of our elementary schools, but we've never done the buildings. The towns always did them. But like Margaret said, it is in the regional agreement, so they're pushing back and they want us to pay for that, which is not in the budget because in March, we weren't aware of that. So I would recommend going with these numbers. On the cherry sheets, they had an additional estimate on transportation of about $40,000 more than we were anticipating on our income sheet. So if we do not include that in these numbers, which it is not, that would cover the insurance that we are short in our budget for the new school.
Well, if Templeton is pushing back on us, their building's insurance, shouldn't we also pick up Phillipston's insurance?
Good question.
We have tried. I have asked them, and the insurance company that covers us also covers Phillipston, and they are having a hard time getting the selectmen in Phillipston to sign off so that we can cover it.
So it's paid for? They're covering it?
Phillipston has... It's paid for on the building, and we just offered that if we're going to pay Templeton's, we should be paying Phillipston as well. But Phillipston has not signed off to transfer it from their policy to ours.
So we should probably make a note to bring that up before budget season again, because it is only fair that both towns pick up the same costs.
And what would that cost if Phillipston did have us pay it?
Phillipston's is pretty minor. I don't have a price for that, but it's very small compared to the other building.
The $30,000 you mentioned, was that the building and contents?
Um, yes.
Just so clear, is it just the new building, or is it this building?
No, this building's separate. It's the new building. We've always paid for this different building.
So it's only the Tom building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and one more question.
If we look at this number, try to minimize it, we're planning some expenses for the new building that we don't know how our planning is going to fare. So, for example, the July bill for the new building, is there anything... Any big difference in what budgeted is to what the bills come through?
Well, there is a bill on my desk from the electric company. It is for the first two months, I guess, July and usage through August. It's $17,000. I have been told that the construction company is supposed to be picking that up. Yes, $11,000 for one month is a lot more than I had budgeted, but when we take over, I hope that we don't have all the lights on during the evening, so it'd be a lot less. So I can't really answer that.
So there's nothing that concerns you on the first month of paying those bills?
No, because the prior month was $5,600. That's more in line, I would say, so...
Plus the equipment they're using and things like that. That's taken a while.
So that would be considered project cost, then, and it'll get picked up through the most...
The project portion, the past due amount, is definitely project. And I was told that they're, because we don't have a certificate of occupancy yet, that they're trying to get the company to cover that one as well.
Do we have substantial completion? Do we have a date on...
And that's the other thing. We do have substantial completion, and that's when it's supposed to switch over to us. So that was at the end of June, like the third week in June. So I believe we're... We need to... That's our responsibility from that point on, so...
Do we have assigned lease?
No.
No, so how are we going to take over it without that?
Yeah, well, I know.
Well, no, that's just important.
I mean, I don't know what the contract for the building, the contractor said, but if it is substantial completion, then that's the date that we'll be taking over.
That's... That was my understanding. Whether they can get them to pay it or not, that's something we'll have to see, but I wouldn't count on it.
So you're not thinking favorably they'll pay that bill?
Well, I mean, it's not their bill, so...
So that's a... These are some reasons why this number...
Yeah, I would change. To follow the process through, let's just use the same numbers we've been using and let it go through the natural process to the town meeting. And then after that, if we have to make changes, we have to make changes.
Well, given the fact that we're now going to have to pay the insurance, I don't think we should change anything.
So I just want to... So the question I have is, do we want to recertify using the new cherry sheet number, at least, the Chapter 70 funds, to give back the difference in what was initially House One back in January to what was approved, which is this last column, this very slight difference? Do we want to certify those numbers? And that's what we would present as part of our... Because the top number, which is the only number on the warrant, these would be the supporting numbers to the town. Is that what I'm hearing? That we have to do?
That's fine, yeah.
It doesn't change the top number, so...
No, that's...
These are the actual numbers, but we're not... We need it.
So with that being said, then, I'll make a... Ask someone to make a motion that... And this is going to be to confirm our certification, that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee is going to confirm the certification of the amount of $19,786,889 for the fiscal year 20 budget. So I'd take a motion to that effect. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any questions? Kangal, do roll call. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Oberschad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojol?
Yes.
Mrs. Charter?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Then I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the estimated income, which is going to be $10,351,444 for fiscal year 20, which is based on the Chapter 70 actual income and the estimated Chapter 71 aid for fiscal year 20. So I would take a motion on that.
Second. I'm... I'm taking that motion, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And just to confirm that, the difference of what we initially estimated income to what this number is, is just the change in that Chapter 70 cherry sheet number. That's the only change that was there. Any questions or comments? Here we go, I'm going to start here. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Charter?
Yes.
Mrs. Triple O?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojol?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, and that was voted unanimous. I would then entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Templeton in the amount of $6,964,988 for fiscal year 20.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any comments? Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Oberschad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojol?
Yes.
Mrs. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. And then I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Phillipston in the amount of $1,655,457 for fiscal year 20.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions? Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Charter?
Yes.
Mrs. Triple O?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojol?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, and that was unanimous. So we have reconfirmed our certification of our top number and made adjustments to the income and the two town assessments. And we'll carry those into the meeting with us next week as information to present to the attendees at our district-wide town meeting, August 21st, next Wednesday, 7:00. A warrant's posted. The only item on it is our budget, so please attend, come. Doesn't matter how you vote, just come and vote, and that's what's important.
Can we talk about that?
You sure can.
Are we going to go with a paper ballot?
That'll be decided on the floor. Someone will have to motion...
Why can't we decide if it's our meeting?
No, it's the moderator that decides.
It's the moderator?
Yeah, and I believe that he indicated that he'll take... He will certainly entertain a motion from the floor to do so.
But will people be given paper ballots when they register? So in case that happens?
Yes, I believe the process that'll be followed is the one that sounded like Phillipston uses. When you check in, you'll be handed a sheet with a colored paper to check yes or no. And if a paper ballot comes to be, you'll go up and deposit that color, and you'll be handed a new color for the next potential go-around. So they'll manage that process.
Okay.
So I know that Mrs. Foley and Mrs. Harris, the two town clerks, have been talking and have that process all settled up. Additionally, the amendments, I believe they were going to use an amendment form. So if anyone wants to consider making an amendment to any of the motions, there needs to be written and submitted into the moderator, so there'll be a form for that, so that people can have a form available to submit a written amendment.
I'm not sure, but usually there's a sandwich board on the common of Waldenville announcing the town meeting. And I don't think it's there, but I really didn't check per se. But could we inquire about that?
Maybe, Mrs. Barney, if you would... I know that in Phillipston, we've got the... One of those boards in the center of town, and I believe the marquee is also up.
Yeah, usually there's one in Waldenville, Templeton, and I'm not sure about East Templeton, but...
Still got the electronic sign, right? We can...
Put it on there?
Or the other sign.
Yeah, have we updated the sign out front yet? I know with people not being around...
Not at all. Yeah.
Okay.
So may I ask for some clarification? I have emails on this paper ballot question that I haven't answered because I wanted it discussed at this committee. So the moderator is in charge of this. Is it a majority once the motion is made?
If the motion is made and seconded, it is a simple majority to request and have enacted the paper ballot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I'm going back a minute. When we just recertified our numbers, I thought we weren't changing Templeton's assessment number.
We are, because the minimum contribution's changed based on the state and using the additional receipts from the cherry sheet. It did lower it a little bit, but we didn't increase the transportation number as additional receipts.
Okay, so that's really... Okay. Sorry, I just got a little thrown out.
No, 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 please ask.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the district-wide town meeting? Okay. I know last week we hashed out a lot of the details, so I think the town clerks have it well under control.
Are the boards of selectmen sitting with us?
So I believe that the setup will be similar to the last time?
Yes, so the school committee, and then each board of selectmen will be on stage with their finances committees or advisory committee on the floor. And I just wanted to mention that we will have free babysitting at this meeting, so I will advertise that as well.
The overflow area will be the cafeteria, I believe, I thought it was confirmed. And I believe that the Templeton town clerk recommended that prior to the meeting, any non-residents or non-voting residents would kind of be staged, I think, like in the gym or somewhere, and then they'll be brought into the non-resident, non-voting area in the cafeteria afterwards. So they seem to have a good process. I know last time it was a little chaotic with people trying to maintain who was voting and who wasn't, and that'll help. And I don't know, have we heard back from Mr. Henshaw if he was available? I hadn't seen anything.
I haven't heard.
Okay. Because Mr. Flynn was asked to be the moderator for the meeting, but we asked for an assistant moderator, and Mr. Henshaw was brought up. He did the special town meeting for Templeton, and they recommended him to be the assistant moderator. That would be staged in the overflow area to help that process through, but we hadn't... Maybe if we can get confirmation. Perfect. Anything else? All right. Next up, we have some student handbook approvals. The first two, the elementary and middle school, had no changes to them other than formatting. So there's nothing to approve there because we had approved in the last time they were changed. They were both reviewed. There was, I believe, Mrs. Barney mentioned that some of the formatting issues was just when we... If you remember, last year, we made that big consolidated overarching district handbook. Some of those sections were duplicated still, so they cleaned that up and made some formatting changes. The last handbook was the high school. We'd actually seen this, boy, over a month ago, I believe, we were given a redline version. We were supposed to get back to Mrs. Vassal with any changes. I don't know if anyone had gotten back to her with any information, but we do need to approve that handbook so that it can be distributed to the students when they come in. I don't know anyone, if someone wanted to make a motion to do so, or have any questions or comments or concerns that we could discuss beforehand.
There were some sections that were coming back to us that weren't quite completed or... So I don't know if we have a timeline for that.
Do you remember which they were? I just don't remember, I'm sorry.
No, it was... There were pieces at the end that said we're going to be worked on.
Was that...
So it's not going to hold up a vote. It's just, I'd like to know what the timeline for any of those unfinished are.
So the high school handbook, as it stands right now, that's been submitted to you, is complete. Susan and I want to make one last pass to just make sure there's nothing duplicated in the handbooks from the original main part to the end, but really, they're ready to go.
They all...
Yeah, and the elementary, for example, this would apply to all the schools, minor things like the new contracts teacher day times. Obviously, that has had to be updated because the new contract has a slight difference of four minutes or six minutes or something, but nothing substantial in elementary or middle.
On page 13, they're crossing out that seniors are reminded they must earn a final passing mark in every course taken during the senior year in order to qualify for NRHS diploma, achieve a certificate of attainment, and to participate in all activities related to graduation. That's coming up?
So I'm not sure if they included that in another place. I don't know every change off the top of my head.
What page was that?
Thirteen.
Yes. Right before on this page. There it is.
So I guess the...
Yeah, I can't really address that without going back and talking to Mrs. Vassal and Mr. Pansale.
But the credit requirement hasn't changed?
No.
But this particular piece doesn't really address credits.
No, no.
Yeah, because somebody can have enough credits and then...
Just pass that.
Correct, yes.
So I guess the question is, is do we have students who have participated even though they've been... Or how would they know they failed if they haven't taken the final until, right, the very end, because that's the last periods?
Yeah, so at the beginning of that paragraph, it does address some of that, where it says the student's year of graduation is determined by that paragraph right there.
Bottom of page 12.
Bottom of page 12, thank you.
I would feel more comfortable knowing why we're taking that out.
Yep.
Maybe if we would like to approve this, we approve that with that paragraph left in. Maybe if we would like to approve this, we approve that, this, that paragraph left in, and then we can, if they want to bring it back with something during the year, we certainly can entertain another change to it, but it sounds like we have enough questions about this. Maybe see if they can leave that in, if that would satisfy the committee at this point. I don't know if there's any other questions, anyone has, but that might address this particular question.
I'll get you an explanation of that.
No, I'm sure. We have someone in the audience.
Congress, what is the location of that paragraph?
Page 13. I know, I think we've, we've also discussed in our academic subcommittee meeting, looking at some of the credits required and anything that may have changed, because I don't think that we, as an academic subcommittee, have looked at what we require for high school graduation, that that can be done during this year in anticipation of if there needed to be any changes or updates, but I know it's something that I had questioned when I looked through this.
Getting me across meetings? I didn't see this, sorry.
Has everybody had enough time to go through this? I guess, if, obviously with school starting, we need to have something that is approved that can be handed out to the students. I was going to bring this up later, but I was going to recommend that we plan to have another school committee meeting. I know everybody, it's been weeks, it's been weeks since we've been together. We're going to see each other next week, and maybe wait for the week after, because we, you know, make it every Wednesday in August. Because based upon what may happen at the district-wide town meeting, we may need to come back together to do something. If we wanted to schedule that and commit to that meeting, we could put off the approval of this handbook to give everybody another week or so to look through it and get their questions to Mrs. Vassal.
Did they give us this, like, a couple months ago?
Yes.
That's what I thought, because I remember looking at it a while, a long time ago.
It was a while ago.
Okay, all right.
And that's, part of me, I'm like, I know I went through this, but I don't remember all of my...
That's exactly how I feel, okay.
So that is an option, if anyone wants to entertain that. Again, we could also approve it and come back with questions, you know, we can't not start the school year without an approved handbook, obviously. So I'll leave it to the committee for decision on what kind of motion you want to make to get this done, either tonight or...
May I also add that it's a very important approval, because legal action goes back to what this handbook says, and if we haven't, if we have any questions, it would be advisable not to pass it until we have our answers.
That's how I feel. I feel, yeah, I'd like some answers, too, if you can space it well.
Yeah, so would we like to then schedule a meeting for August 28th? I'm going to go to the end of my agenda to write this note, because that's where I was going to bring it up. Okay, so we have two choices, that I was looking at calendars. We could meet next Thursday, August 22nd, if we wanted, or we could wait till Wednesday, the 28th, and meet on the 28th, and this could be an agenda item that we will approve, a version of the handbook, committing that we will get to Mrs. Vassal up in the next few days. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, she could just, they could send their reasoning, why they want to take it out, that's, you know...
Yep, that, that one right there, yeah.
They already asked.
Okay, good. And then if anybody has anything else, that'll give some, I think I had one thing that I know I didn't get to her with, and that's my bad. So on the 28th, what time would everyone like to meet on the 28th?
Did we pass over the 22nd?
I think...
I'm not here on the 22nd, but you can still have a meeting without...
Okay, and this is massive opening here, so the...
28th works.
28th. What time do you want to do?
Six.
Six? Six? Okay, so we will schedule a meeting for Wednesday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM. You will also notice on our calendar, there is a school committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, even though it's the district-wide town meeting. Council advised that we post a meeting, just in case there was anything that we needed to get together, to cover ourselves, so that's why you'll see that out there. If we don't actually need to do anything, we won't even convene the meeting, and it will just not happen.
What time is it posted?
It's concurrent with the, with the district-wide town meeting.
We did that last night.
It starts at 7:00?
At 7:00, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so we'll pass over the handbook, we'll do that on 8/28. Everybody get, if they have anything else to ask to do so.
There is an open house on the 28th. I don't know if that affects...
What time on the 28th?
5 to 7.
And where is that open house?
For Templeton.
The Templeton Center?
Mm-hmm. Templeton Elementary.
Is that our meeting there?
5 to 7, so if we want, we could actually go, if we wanted to attend, we could attend early to go and then come here to meet for 6. Is that okay with everyone?
Are we only doing the handbook?
Based on what happened on Wednesday's district-wide town meeting, there may be a budget, agenda item as well, so we'll have to kind of play that by ear at that point.
So I was just wondering if we should do 6:30, in case there's people at TC that want to come.
I'm fine with whatever. Lori suggested maybe 6:30, in case anyone who wanted to visit TC and come to that meeting would have the opportunity.
Couldn't we have the meeting at TC? Vicky suggested that sounded good to me.
Can we have a meeting in that bill with that occupancy?
Well, it's not for adding on the 28th.
Let's really hope we have it for the 28th. That would be...
6:30.
Yeah, 6:30, and you want to, we'll see here, we'll do it 6:30 here in the key, but let's not push fate. So everyone can, and I will say, if everyone can copy, tape on any questions, too, this way, if there's questions, and as well, I know you're kind of the consolidator for all of this information at this point, at least you'll know what we're asking and why, and then sort of answers through if we get to the meeting on the 28th, so.
Thank you for letting me have that.
All right, school committee comments.
Okay. I understand that we, the lease is not signed. I understand that we should have that if we're going to have an occupancy permit. So anything that can move this, needs to get, it needs to get done. If it needs the school committee to sit and do it, or some committee of it, I know that it's out there, that people have been working on it, but it's got to get, things have to get signed.
So we received a draft late last night, first draft from the town. It's already been forwarded to council. I know I have already provided comments on it. I think first purview has been done. I think Hank, you were copied on it as well. We could certainly shed it the rest of the committee.
That would be nice.
Yep, and I'll actually share with you my comments as well, so that if you have things to add to it, but really, at this point, council needs to get back to us with their recommendations and concerns as well, so if we could...
It's very late for them, because we've talked about this.
It is.
Again, we have the select board that's, I mean, if you only received it last night, we've talked about this when, beginning of June, May?
Yep.
And we did all the helping we could by getting the templates. So if there's some stalling, we need to push for it to be done, so we know what we're looking at. And if we can help, then we'll have to convene again. So as of now, you're going to share that document, but we don't have timelines yet.
Nope.
Okay, so we have a meeting coming next week, so maybe that should be on the agenda as well.
Well, the district-wide, the 28th would be the next...
Oh, the 28th, then?
Yep.
Or at least have some discussion.
The 28th, isn't that the same night that the board of select want us to be there to reappoint the Monty Tech rep?
What time is their meeting?
I believe it's at 6:00. So we could go to that quickly.
So we would have to tell them to do that first, and that representation would be the Templeton members, because it's for the Templeton rep. And it's my understanding that if whoever's there will vote, so whoever can make it, and then your vote will count towards, I think they're looking to reappoint...
Jim Gil...
Jim Gilmore as the rep again.
What night was that again? It's the 28th, the same night we're going to meet at 6:30, because we could go there first.
What time is that?
6:00.
Well, then someone would have to facilitate the agenda, so that comes up first.
Yep, so Susan, would you mind reaching out to Holly and asking her to put that first?
Just...
Yep, would you mind reaching out to Holly and telling her that it would need to be first, because we've got a meeting scheduled that night?
My, my, just the email says 6:30 on the 28th.
For the, okay.
So why don't we hold out until 6:45?
Maybe we can meet on 27th.
We could, we could meet Tuesday, the 27th.
Probably be easier.
Yep, now let's see, can everybody check, they'll just check my calendar?
Wait, what are we doing?
The Tuesday, the 27th, instead of the 28th.
What time?
It's 6:00. 6:00 o'clock on the 27th would be a Tuesday?
I can do that.
Okay, everybody? Okay. 6:00, the 27th, Tuesday, it'll be here. Okay, and I'm going to add the high school handbook. I will put in a line item for the FY '20 budget, and it'll be a recap of whatever happened at the district-wide town meeting and anything else we need to do with that, the lease for Templeton Center, and then whatever else comes up in between now and 48 hours prior.
The other thing, we usually get a listing of teachers that have left us, or it is coming.
It's coming up on the agenda, yeah?
Okay.
Cool.
That's what we always have.
Yep, five items down.
I think no, it's still coming.
No, it is, yep.
There it is, look at that.
Yeah. Any other school committee comments?
It's at 6:00.
6:00, no, on the town, 6:30 on the 28th is the Templeton board of select meeting that they're looking for the Templeton School Committee of Representatives to meet.
And that's at 6:30.
And we will post a meeting for 6:30 PM on 8/28 at the Templeton Town Hall. So if all five of the Templeton residents show up and anyone else does, when we have a quorum, we will have a duly posted meeting with the agenda, so I'll take care of making that happen.
And 6 on the 27th.
Yep. Okay. All right, any other school committee comments? Okay, we will go on, surplus items. If everyone will look on their, on their agendas, we do have those three surplus lists that we will be getting to, and yes, Mr. Moulton, Baldenville is on there. So the first one, though, is for technology. Mr. Wakefield and his staff have a listing of a whole bunch of technology equipment. We've got computers, laptops, servers, et cetera, printers, and a whole bunch of miscellaneous items. I would entertain a motion to approve this list for surplus.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments?
I'm just wondering where they're going.
Do we know how we dispose of these?
I believe you have, doesn't it have a copy that takes all old computer type stuff? It's not, not as usable, and it's just junk.
It has to be resigned.
Yeah, it's resigned, you have to make a present, fix your form.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, passes unanimously, so we have surplus the tech list. Now we have a surplus technology equipment summer list, oh, I'm sorry, this is just the cover memo from Mr. Wakefield, never mind that, ignore that one. We have the Baldenville Elementary surplus listing. There's all sorts of items. I will just ask maybe Mrs. Geister, Mrs. Barney, just to give us a quick how these, obviously we know because we're closing Baldenville, if there's anything in particular we need to know about these items?
No, we're gonna, it will go through the process of being offered to the towns, and then whatever they all want, I guess, we will figure out how to dispose of them after that. A lot of this stuff is very, very old, like the desks, the chairs, I mean, there's wooden desks probably from when you went to school in that building that are on this list.
Did you look for someone's initials on that?
A lot of the stuff that was still decent was shipped over to Phillipston or came up here. It's been remitted throughout the district to take whatever was pretty salvageable.
All right, I would entertain a motion, then, to approve this surplus list for items from Baldenville Elementary.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other questions or comments on this list? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, approved unanimously. Next up, we have a rate card, if everyone, do we have the rate card out there?
If you click on it, it is there.
Oh, look at that, it doesn't show up as an attachment, that's bizarre. Usually we get a little icon.
I'm seeing it as an attachment, because...
Okay, yeah, I'm, oh, okay.
I got it.
I can pick and pull it up, so it was there, it just wasn't shown like it was. Okay, so we have a rate card for, and this should look familiar to most people. From what I understand, it goes through the end of December, and then from January 1st forward, because there is a minimum wage change. And although, as a municipal, we are exempt from that law, we just can't find anyone to work for us if we don't react to some of these wage changes, so that's why there's two columns here. So I would entertain a motion to approve this rate card, effective today, August 14th.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Questions or comments?
So what does a substitute teacher make a day? How are the hours defined?
The day is six and a half hours.
So the total for them for the day would be?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, eighty-seven. Good, because that hadn't gone up for a while.
If you look at that, it's maybe a quarter more per hour. It hasn't gone up a lot, but with the minimum wage, it's making it difficult to get people to work.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. Right, so our rate card has been approved. Thank you. User fee approval, we're working on putting this together for the school committee to see. We've given approvals in the past that we just haven't looked at in a while, so it was just being brought up, and until the teachers come back and some of the information gets vetted, we'll have all this hopefully from the September meeting, so we can see what our user fees are going to be. So we'll pass over this for this month and move that to September. Strategic plan, so we received an email a couple of weeks ago from Dr. Kazivan that included several documents. We have a strategic plan. There is, was the superintendent's goals and objectives and indicators, and it was all tied, because they're all related together. We do need to approve the strategic plan, and I know Jeff, you are a representative on the committee. We can do one of two things, based on the will of the committee. I don't know how many people had a chance to go and review the document, it was very well put together. We can either go ahead and approve this, or if the committee, I know in the past, we've looked to do a workshop to kind of do a deeper dive, to get a better understanding, and then we can approve it. It's up to the committee. What I will note, though, is that until the strategic plan is passed, it'll be hard for the different schools to work on their school improvement plans, because they should all be tied together. So if we do want to have a deeper dive, it just needs to be sooner rather than later, so that the schools can have some of the approved documentation to begin their work, so their improvement plans can be constructed. So I will put that out to the committee for a motion to do whatever you feel you would like to do.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I do have a second. Any questions or comments or concerns? I have, Jeff, you sat on this committee, do you, I just would ask you to just maybe speak to it for a minute and let us know your thoughts.
Well, I actually, I think it's great, I do think it all ties in. We had several workshops where we sat with a lot of the administrators and to develop this, just a lot of thought went into it, so.
I think it's easy to read and understand too.
It is.
Makes sense to the layperson.
I liked that it looked like our district improvement plan, so it wasn't like we were trying to figure something out again, so it was really nicely laid out.
So I would just say that the strategic, the strategic planning process added another layer to our district improvement plan. So our district improvement plan is not now a separate document, it's included and encompassed within this. Some things have moved around a little and things have been updated based on work we've done. But a lot of the work that was in the district improvement plan is continuing under this umbrella with some new pieces that came as a result of that process.
I think one thing, they have a lot of timelines, they've elaborated when you'd get progress on that particular goal. But I don't think we as a committee bring that up enough. So I would hope that in the coming year, that when we reach those dates, that we actually at a committee level, not a some committee, but a committee level talk about it so that the work can be acknowledged. And, and sometimes it's just a matter of saying, well, we didn't get there and we have put more into it. And that needs to be noted too. So yeah, those, those are well defined, but we don't give it enough voice.
So what I'm, what I'd like to propose is if we add a strategic plan update, maybe every three months, we put it on the agenda. And even if the update is everything's on target, at least we've addressed it, I like that idea because you're right. Now that we have a document, it's, needs to be living and breathing or else it's no good to anybody. So I do like that idea. Thank you. Alright, so I have a motion to approve the strategic plan and I have a second on that, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor to approve the strategic plan as presented, say aye? Aye, opposed, abstained, it was unanimous. So we have an approved strategic plan for the district. I'm certain that that'll probably be posted out on the website shortly, as soon as we can get someone to do that and put it in a format we can put up there. And as I said, I will add it to the agenda items, I'll put that as a recurring item every couple of months so we can review that. The next item was the district improvement plan, as Kate just mentioned, it is tied into the strategic plan, so there's really nothing for us to do. But I wanted to make sure that point wasn't lost on people as to where that data was contained. And then the school improvement plans, as I mentioned, now that we've approved the strategic plans, they'll get pushed out.
Yeah. So the schools did a fair bit of work last year with our district improvement plan, bringing it to their staff, resurrecting any current or recent past school improvement plans that they had and doing a crosswalk and really working with their staff to say what in our current plan is reflected in the district plan, what do we need to add? Staff really engaged very thoroughly with that, saw some areas that the district plan included that had been not included maybe in their former strategic, their former school improvement plan, and they revised those. Where our district strategic plan now is encompassing that district improvement plan with some tweaks, I think that process will go fairly smoothly with them because they have a good solid base in place right now.
I would like to make a note of when, if you can give us just a target for maybe when we can see some drafts. We don't, as a committee, approve the, the school improvement plans, but would you like to review them after they've been vetted through the buildings, the site councils, and then obviously through yourself and Dr. Kazivan? If we, are we looking at maybe early winter or, you know, first early year?
I think early winter is reasonable. We have done a lot of planning around how we are spending our time with staff through professional development days, staff meetings after school, common plannings and so forth, so there are a lot of things on the plate. So that would definitely be included, but I would say early winter would be safe.
So maybe like a January?
Yes.
Timeframe?
Yep.
So what I'll do is I'll put it on our placeholder for a January time and we can revisit that as it comes closer.
And if it's done sooner, we'll let you know.
Which is good because so often in the past, we've found our school improvement plans come out after the school year's over. So if these can come out in January and they'll look forward maybe for an 18-month timeframe to get the upcoming school year, so we're not always behind. And we can get on a cycle where it makes sense. Great, okay. And the last item of, it's new business, only because it was new information, the superintendent's goals and indicators, which were derivative of the strategic plan. I would entertain a motion to approve the goals and indicators as presented, if everyone feels that we are ready to do so. If you'd like to have more conversation, Dr. Kazivan is not here this evening to answer any questions. We could push this off to our next meeting, which would be on the 27th at this point, if people felt they really wanted to speak with, with Dr. Kazivan. Kate's pretty fluent though.
Yeah, I feel like I could answer most of your questions if you have them because Dr. Kazivan and I developed them together because my work and his work, you know, go hand in hand, so.
So I will put that out to the committee, I will either take a motion to approve it or if someone wants to recommend that we put it off, that would be fine as well, so.
I make the motion to approve it.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the superintendent's goals and indicators.
I'll second that.
Are you second, I'm sorry, Jeff's saying, yeah, I'm second, and I'm gone, huh? And I have a second on that. Any questions or comments on that information that's presented? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, abstained, so they have been approved unanimously. Much like the strategic plan, we will need to do an interim review and then a final assessment. I would like to maybe recommend that rather than wait to do our interim, that we bring this up maybe every three months as well and just kind of get a status. I think it dovetails nicely with an update on the strategic plan anyway. And that way, when it comes time for us to do our interim and our final, it's not as much overhead for us because we're very familiar with, with what's going on. So I'm actually gonna add that as an agenda item for those same months with the strategic plan and we'll go from there. There were no other items that came up within 48 hours. Next up, we have an enrollment update.
So as of the report that Ms. Mason, Ms. Mason did yesterday, the total district enrollment is at 1,477 with 1,202 residents and 275 school choice. But I do want to caution us to be careful with that number, it's not a great month to be reporting that because we don't really have a handle yet on what school choice out is, right? If anyone is applying to go to a different district for school choice, to school choice out, you know, they worry about getting accepted and then that the requesting records and letting us know kind of follows and may lag behind. Another factor is that other, you know, in various school districts, depending on how they handle it, they may or may not have the office staff in the summer to put those requests through. So those will be coming through in the next few weeks so that we'll have a more solid number on the net school choice.
Have we, when do we hear from Monty Tech, the students that'll be going in ninth grade? Because I know that, you know, a good chunk of our eighth graders, do we, when do we get that notification? Because I'm assuming they must do a records request for, is that transfer, I don't know how that'll.
I'm not sure how that works either, I'm sure if we haven't gotten it, it's.
Yeah, soon, end of August.
So alright, so we'll, we'll do enrollment again at our next meeting on the 27th.
Which will be more accurate. Maybe even the September meeting, I would say would be.
I'm not seeing it, do we have a number for the senior class this year? A grade 12?
Yep, I have, I have that.
And I know that can change with.
Oh, thank you.
That moves, but.
Oh, yeah, no, I have it here. It's a 79, exactly.
79 to start, that's part of, I don't, you know, a lot of the comments we get are the fact that that number's so small because they remember graduating, say, with higher numbers than this school and others.
Yeah, the ninth grade is, is much larger at 99.
I know, but that, but we.
Even that's small.
We, yeah, because that dwindles and we've been just seeing that. I'd like to have some, some look say to that.
Yeah, I think if we can, maybe for the next meeting, because I know all the data's there, it's just how we present it, maybe take a look at each class, you know, my graduation year. That'll at least give us a directive on how big our classes, because I know that the elementary grades do have many more students than the, the higher grades, but you're right. What does that trend have been, has it been looking like?
And is it going to continue or, and how can we intercede with that? We need to graduate more than, because if that's the number to start, it's always less to graduate. So it concerns me. And a number of people in the community as well.
I don't know if it has anything to do with it, but last year, this past year's graduating class was the year they were born, the year that 9/11 happened. And this year's graduating class was the year after 9/11, so I don't know if people having kids were, you know, maybe thinking they, they didn't want to bring kids into this world because of the state of the state type of thing and State of the Union. I, I don't know, maybe it was just, just the idea of what was going on in the world at that time and maybe less kids were being born, I don't know.
But this has been a trend, boy, for a number of years that when I get to graduation and I see the number of students graduating, I'm saying, why?
Well, it would be interesting to see, and I don't know how easy it would be to pull this data for our next meeting or even in September, is if we looked at students, you know, residents, we know our school choice population. How many residents are not coming to, to school? We know we've got, I don't know, 30-some odd that maybe go to Monty Tech. How many are homeschooled, how many go elsewhere? Because I think that would also be an indicator. And if we had that information, maybe for as many grades as we can, if we're seeing the trend is, you know, that it's growing in the lower, then, then at least looking forward, we have a better projection. And maybe this is turning around, but until we have the data, I don't think we'll know it, so I don't know if it's.
That date we get it only in October or something, I can recall Dr. Kazivan saying that our school choice out numbers and things like that, am I right in saying that?
But October, May, October. Well, yeah, you have to report on October 1/1, so after that date, I think they have until the 15th to report, like if they have your kids or we have theirs.
Just a, just a future, future project, because that is concerning.
Well, and, and it's, it's interesting to see, if you go out and read the Donahue Report, that's been done on the population in the state of Massachusetts. And you look at our two towns, that the Donahue Report has actually projected an aging population, which I don't think anyone's surprised at. But when you look at Phillipsden, school age children decline, it's on a decline. Templeton, on the other hand, is showing a slight increase or leveling for school age, but both populations of the towns are aging. So, you know, that's concerning as well, so even if we do see this bubble of larger class sizes, does that mean it's gonna stay that way? And, and that is a bit concerning.
Yep, there are also curriculum implications as that goes through as well, so that's why I'd like to look at.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you a question? What is the impact of the number of seniors out, is it the budget of the district or what is, what is the concern of the number of seniors?
Well, it has a concern on curriculum. I guess my concern is why are there not more?
Yeah, for us to parents, it is.
And so, I mean, we did a study, very similar, it was requested about why students leave and there were various reasons, that's very similar to all the others, other school districts. But, but it seems in particular that the senior class, by the time they get to graduation, is lower than the number we'd like to see. So my bringing it up is, is there something happening in the grades that they're in from nine to 12 that's lowering those numbers? What is it? I mean, yeah, the budget has implications when you have a smaller high school, but we don't know yet until we look at it.
Okay, so we'll look to maybe get some more information by maybe grade level at our next meeting and obviously this is a, this is an agenda item, we talk about every meeting, so we'll keep expanding the discussion to try and come up with some answers or at least indicators. School choice update. I don't think there's much of a school choice update.
I can speak a little bit to it. We've weighed down in our complications coming in, we closed school choice altogether for elementary and middle school. We do have a few high school levels coming in occasionally, I got a couple last week.
Do you have the accounts for the additional kindergarten, Templeton, or TES?
The class.
That, well, that additional kindergarten class, how many students are in that?
Oh, how many for the classes for kindergarten?
Well, that extra class, that was.
We were trying to fill a class with school choice.
So.
Well, the committee.
Our kindergarten, pardon, our kindergarten class is in TC right now, we're at 17, 16, 16, and.
16 and 16.
16 and 16. In TC.
So do you know how many choicest in there are?
Yes. Five, five people are school choice.
Okay, what about the new classroom that we opened, that's, should be, the bulk of them should be school choice, right? Because do we? And kindergarten, we.
It was funny, a few, a couple, because we did the lottery, then a couple, there's two that I can think of off the top of my head on the list that actually moved into the town.
But didn't we open, we approved having 14, 14 spots open for a brand-new kindergarten class?
Yes, and we, we called a number of them and heard back a few of them, and in the meantime, we had some movements and stuff coming as well.
So did we add another kindergarten class or no?
Yes.
Yes.
But they're filled with residents and not school choice students like we.
Because people moved into town.
Right, I know, we had.
It becomes pain.
Right, we had, we were funding the teacher and the parent by taking the school choice kids in, so that's a problem, because that's not what our intent was. So we've only got. So, so how many school choice total again in kindergarten?
Five in TC.
And five in Phillipsden.
That's not, that's not what we agreed to do, that doesn't financially help us fund the teacher and the parent in a kindergarten class. How many total kindergarten students do we have in TC?
Total 81.
So if we have five, we, we had four teachers and now you're telling me we've added a fifth teacher, but we didn't bring in the school choice students to fund that teacher. So why did we add another teacher, I guess is my question, when four teachers would average 20 kids in a classroom? That's, which is what we had said we were looking to do. So I'm, do we have wait, more kids on the waitlist for kindergarten?
There are more kids on the waitlist.
Okay, because. Help me out here, guys, I'm.
Let me just ask, so they were on the waitlist for school choice, they were on the waitlist because they haven't responded back to our.
There's not, they haven't responded back to the original 15 that we called. And then we had an influx of move-ins and people coming in to register, so I was told to hold off at that original 15.
So I mean, we keep the fifth, we can take all, we can't all those now because.
Yeah, but do you want to count the, the classes at what, 17, 18?
I think we had talked of, no, no 20 was gonna be the top. I think we had talked of, no, no twenty was going to be the tops, but.
That's what I meant. So I mean, you could.
It just comes to intent. The intent in adding, and that was one I voted against, but the intent was that by taking, you were going to fund the teacher through school choice. So the additional teacher couldn't come till the school choice numbers were going to pay for that and a parent, and that was a problem for me.
And it turns, but now it is a problem. Because we have hired the teacher.
In fairness, though, I do think it's probably hard to reach out to a school choice kid and say, are you going to come here if we get you a teacher? Do you know what I mean? So how do you do that?
Which is fine, but the fact of the matter is, is now we've hired that teacher, we've committed to do that.
Right.
But we don't have, we didn't take the school choice students in to cover the cost.
So if we still have a waitlist of school choice students for kindergarten, should we, we should be reaching out to them?
We should be, so I don't know, so, so you said you've reached out to, you did, we did the lottery.
Called fifteen, yes.
And you haven't heard back from?
There's, well, a few said no, a couple moved back into town.
So how many, how many are left on the?
On the whole list? Well, there was a total of twenty-nine.
Additional or a total?
Total.
For kindergarten only.
For kindergarten only.
So call the rest, I would call the rest of them and see if they aren't coming in, because adding fifteen to five pluses is only three each.
Three each, yeah. I mean, we, we need, in order to, to financially cover the costs we have, we have got to have a classroom, and again, I know that we don't have one classroom filled, just so that it makes sense, we spread out, but we need those numbers to fund that position. So if we can, I would say anyone who had, that you've called and hasn't responded, has not responded, thank you. You know, I, we need some commitment from, from people so that you could, and if they told you no, we definitely can pick another name and reach out to those, so that we can keep cycling through.
Should we reopen it for a week?
We don't need to reopen, I mean, we have, if you reopen it, that opens the application, that's the assumption, you own the application process, I think we can go through our lists and also continue making.
Yes.
Then if we have to reopen.
Also, again, maybe getting that increase on high school, high school, so that, you know, altogether it might help.
Yep, and it certainly looks like we have increased, I know we've had a number of school choice students over in Phillipston that we've been able to add to some of those classes, so that's helped. But again, I know kindergarten specifically, the intent was, we needed to be able to fund those positions with the money. So, yeah, so if you would try and cycle through and, and we can add to those classes, that would be good, and if we can get an update again, obviously, this is an agenda item on every meeting, so.
I just have one question.
Can we have that on the next, when we meet next?
Ma'am, too.
Yes, because.
As far as the people that were school choice or on that school choice list, how many were, became residents? Just the two, or were there more?
There was two.
In kindergarten?
In kindergarten.
So were there others in other grades?
Um, we didn't have, I don't think so. Not that I know of, I'm just. I don't believe so, no. We had several in the, we didn't, obviously, we didn't have as many as in the higher elementary grades, because we were letting them to Phillipston, so I didn't have to do like a lottery per se, because we had enough openings. There was a few that said, there was like three or four of us that said they did not want to go to Phillipston, and even this past week, we lost two kids in Phillipston that they decided want to go and they're a sticker to school, they tried again this year, they got one.
Kindergarten is the main one, so, yes.
Can we define the number that's needed to keep those five kindergarten classes?
So we, we had approved adding.
How many more?
Right. Fourteen school choice students we were looking to take into kindergarten in order to open up that classroom. And you said we have five right now? Right, so we, the fourteen was the original number. We had initially talked seventeen, we lowered it because we didn't know how many residents show up at the last minute, and we didn't want to overpack the classrooms, because the other piece of it that we have to consider is that the following year, when all of those students from kindergarten matriculate to first grade, we only have four teachers in first grade, we don't have that fifth one. So that's going to be a challenge, coming into fifth grade and taking four, five classrooms, five classrooms and moving them into four. But, yeah, I think to your point, Mary Ann, we need to, we've got to have at least those fourteen students. And at this point, with us so close to school starting, I think we've got a good handle on our residents, so that would be nine more, which would bring us to ninety, over five classrooms is what, eighteen in a classroom?
Right. And so you reached out to fifteen, so we'll just need to reach out to additionals.
Yeah.
I will call back the ones that I have in the background, and then I have more on the list.
Yeah, say if we don't hear from you by Friday, then your spot will be.
If I do, according to my list of like, call them, it's just that I haven't gotten back to me, it still leaves me room underneath that fifteen, because there's a few that said no, two that would, one who was a Phillipston resident already, and a couple moved into town, so it allows me to go down further in the list.
Perfect.
And ask some more people.
All right, any other questions on the school choice? Staffing update. And this is what Ms. Triple, you were asking about before.
So, we have nine new staff that will be attending new teacher or new educator training, starting Monday, actually. Of those, seven are teachers, and one is new, a new teacher who's a middle school and high school project lead the way in science. One teacher is a special ed teacher at the middle school, which is a kind of a domino effect from a special ed teacher that moved into a regular classroom position and opened up a special ed position.
At the high school?
At the middle school, also. Then we had two math teachers to replace, one was a resignation, and those have been filled, all of these positions have been filled so far. The K teacher and the grade two and four teacher that we added back, so that adds up to the seven, and then, of course, we have two assistant principals.
So we have.
New assistant principals.
We have, right, so we have a new, so we have Colby Young is our new vice principal at the high school.
Yep.
And has he started?
He has, he's been in, I was in interviews with him with a team this morning, he's been in to spend some days with Mr. Van Salet so that he can kind of hand the reins over. Janet Smith, who's been the middle school assistant principal, has been in quite a bit, she was hired a little earlier than Colby was, Colby was basically just hired.
Can you give us any information about them?
I wasn't in, on their hiring committees, so I don't really know their backgrounds. I know Colby went to Boston University, and I know he, yeah, maybe Susan can pull the resumes up. Janet, I believe, came from a local area school, she had, she was a familiar person, we were familiar with her record, they both seemed to be really good hires, I'm very happy with, with what we were able to do this summer.
So as of right now, what positions do we have open?
So what we have opened right now is our high school nurse, who's retired, we're continuing to work on that, I've been in touch with Dr. Salavardos every day, pretty much, about that, he was on vacation for a bit, and we had, just within the last day or so, a resignation at the high school of a special ed teacher. So we have an interview for that, actually, tomorrow, I believe there is an interview set up, so there are those two positions.
That's not on this list.
Pardon me?
That is not on this list?
No, it's not.
So it's brand new, okay, so that, so the, the special ed teacher at the high school is not on there, so that needs to, okay, so the.
He's there, he was replaced already.
Yeah, look at that, he is replaced already. So the, so the nurse, only because I know with sports season kicking off, what are we doing to backfill that in the interim?
So our previous nurse has done a fair bit of work, making sure that we're set up for that, I think we're in good shape for that, we clearly need to do our best to move on a nurse, we'll have to come up with a plan B, we don't manage to hire one. It's, you know, we, we've gone out, there has been a posting already, there have, haven't been that many applicants, you know, of course, we're looking for the right credentials, so I think you just posted it again today or yesterday. So we're hoping with the new posting to attract some more candidates.
And then Mr. Clapp, I now shook over some music, which is exciting for him, and for I think the music program. Have we that filled the math and science side?
Yeah, so, I forgot to mention that, so we have a position that's going to be primarily math to fill in Mr. Clapp's load, but as you know, he's a very versatile teacher, so we're hoping that person can also fill in one science. We had some promising interviews today that I sat in on, so we should know something, we're hoping this week, early next week, on that position.
Great.
So actually, there are three open, because I forgot about that.
Any, any other comments or questions? Obviously, we will look to have this, maybe at our H27 meeting, just an updated, you know, as things happen, we'll get a new, new listing. And then, what we'd like to obviously see happen is definitely our two new administrators to come to, probably not the August meeting, but the September meeting, to come in, meet the committee, and then we'll see, I know last year, we talked about maybe trying to do something to meet some of the new teachers as well, and we could never, with the way things were, it was very hard to coordinate, we'll see if we can do something like that this year, if that works, but we'll kind of figure that, plan that out by year, but definitely the administrators we'd like to meet, so we'll plan on that, maybe in September.
Margaret.
Yes.
Can I just say that I was on the search for Janet, okay? So I could just speak about that a little?
Oh, perfect. Very good.
So Janet was, was very good, there were actually two candidates that we were really interested in, and obviously Janet won out, she had a lot of teaching experience, as well as she had some administrative experience. One of the great things about her was she was very familiar with the PBIS that we're implementing here, she had some background with that, so we felt very confident with that, so she was.
Great.
It was, actually, you know, I don't remember if it was unanimous with the committee, but it was very, it was very close, she was highly recommended with the committee, okay?
Yeah, I heard, I did hear that the committee felt she was a very strong candidate, and from working with her over the last couple of weeks, I think it's a great team that we're going to have at the middle school. I've only met Colby a couple times, so I'm not slighting him, I just haven't worked with him as much.
And she's local, from what I understand, too, which I think, because I did hear about her when I got my hair done recently, so the community has already heard, and they were very positive, too, so it was, it was good to hear community members, too, speaking of, of her, so good. Well, that's great. Thank you, Jeff. Opening day information, this is the opening day that we do before school starts, the teachers come in for a couple of PD days. Normally, the school committee gets invited to Dr. Cassavan's opening remarks, where he will shamelessly make fun of everybody, all in good humor, and he likes to post old yearbook pictures of people and do fun things. So if, just as a placeholder, I'm assuming we'll be invited again, if you have some information on what those days will look like and what we should plan on attending if we're available?
I do. So the schedule is going to be very similar to what it was last year, we'll start with coffee and pastries in the lobby at seven thirty in the morning.
That's on Wednesday?
I'm sorry, on the, on August twenty-eighth, yep. Dr. Cassavan will do his welcome address at eight. We are planning to have an Alice training from nine to ten, and then we'll have some building meetings, staff lunch, and some additional training in the afternoon. The big PD day really is the next day, where we have plans for all of our educators, from a full-day PD, we use eight o'clock to two fifty, so elementary educators are going to have training from the company for inter-reading, which is going to be great for them, that's a new program for them, so all elementary teachers, paraprofessionals, and so forth will participate in that, and I've been working very closely with the middle school building administration and the high school building administration for that, for plans that they're developing in-house to move forward on things that are on their action plans. So those are really shaping up to, to really be good, and I think it's time that they need to move forward priorities in their buildings, so I think that's looking really good. Yeah, so I'm very pleased about that.
So Wednesday, Wednesday, the twentieth of August, eight o'clock, remarks will kick off, so school committee, mark the calendars if you're available.
I would like to also say that Dr. Cassavan and I had a really good meeting with the school adjustment officer and Officer Fless, thank you. I really don't know what his title is, is he sergeant or?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, regarding our Alice plans, and as you know, Alice is our safety protocol that we use in the building, so we have a really comprehensive plan this year, I think we're going to launch with that one-hour reminder kind of training, and then we're going to target each building based on their specific needs, as you know, you're aware, we have a new building, teachers need to know what the protocols are for that building and so forth, so we're going to have kind of a staged, a phased bit of training this year to make sure that those plans are really firm, so I feel really good about that.
Okay. School open houses and visiting information, I know those are in the works, do we have some?
We do.
Dates and times?
Yep. So we have TES is going to be Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, it's going to be between five and seven, and I believe it's going to be staggered for the grade levels, and there's some provision for parents who have students in multiple grade levels. Phillipston is going to be Tuesday, September third, from six to seven. The middle school is Thursday, September nineteenth, from five thirty to seven. And the high school is Thursday, October third, from six to eight. But parents, particularly parents of freshmen, but anyone else who's interested, are going to be invited on the end of the freshman academy day, which is August thirtieth at four thirty.
Are they going to provide pizza that day, too?
That I don't know.
They have in the past.
They, they may.
Will they provide pizza?
There'll be refreshments.
There'll be refreshments.
Not, it's a little bit, so.
Okay, there'll be refreshments for the parents and the students at the end of freshman academy.
Could that come in an email to the school committee with maybe a sample of the time where you opened the campus?
Yeah, actually, I was going to be next up, but no, I was probably going to forget it, so it's a good thing you said.
Now, that would be helpful to have it, and maybe a sample of the attention that the parents receive for the open house.
So if we can get that, I know that there is, I've been noticing on Facebook, they've been pushing a lot of information out on the Templeton Center page and stuff, so if we can get that sent to us, plus anything else, that would be great, and this way we can mark our calendars. Thank you. I wish about.
I just have one question, do we do exit interviews when people are leaving, so that we have some idea of why people leave?
You might be able to answer that. We do, we have done that, some people, like, all this time, you just hear them out and they're, we don't see them again, but he does, we do an exit interview, yes, if people.
Do they have any written?
There's a form that we ask them to fill out.
Because sometimes that's information for what we need as well. Thank you.
Anything else on our staffing and open houses? All right. Summer work update, curriculum and instruction.
Okay. So, as you know, we're adopting a new K to five reading program, which is tremendous. The Department of Ed had a grant this spring. The Department of Ed had a grant this spring that we wrote and were, were granted $9,500, and it was specifically for districts where we're adopting a new curriculum. So we had three days so far, we have two days coming up next week, for a total of five days, with teachers to unpack that curriculum and learn about the shifts in the ELA standards, and really become deeply embedded in the standards, and how the program that we have adopted is reflecting those shifts in the standards. Teachers did an amazing job with that work, the wrap-up to, the additional two days are really working days to just implement a lot of the things that they learned, so that was awesome, because we used the entirety of that, those funds for teacher stipends, so that work was a really good bit of work that didn't cost the district any money. In addition to that, we did some curriculum writing to align grade eight civics and high school US history to the new standards that came out in 2018. The biggest change in middle school was that eighth grade civics, and in high school, there were some date changes in the different courses, so Mr. Iben and our eighth grade...
Jess.
Jess McLaughlin coordinated with each other and then did their own independent work as well, I met with them and gave them some, a little bit of training on, you know, what we're looking for when we write curriculum, and what should be included and so forth, they really appreciated that, and then they really took that ball and just went with it. In addition, the high school math department, as you know, last year adopted the Engage New York or Eureka Math for Algebra I, they had gotten together and done some work last year on really unpacking that, if you, if you can ever see the curriculum printed, it's three to five binders, it might be, you know, this much stuff, so they really went through that and looked at what we, based on the standards, what we need to emphasize and so forth, did a really nice job and taught that all year, so this summer, they expanded that work to geometry. So I believe four of the high school department math people got together over a course of a number of days and did that work for the geometry course, so that's really good, because the standards aren't new anymore, but they haven't, across the state, really, haven't always reached high school yet, right? This was the first year, we just had the first year where they were assessed based on the new standards, so, so they were prepared for that, and now they're expanding on that, so that was really good. In addition, we have expanded Project Lead the Way, so a lot of work has happened this summer regarding Project Lead the Way. We previously offered one middle school course and one high school course. The grant that we wrote for that, those courses, was a two-year grant, and we're entering our second year of that grant. In addition, we wrote and received a grant for elementary, so middle and high will be in their second year of the grant, and elementary will be in the first of two years of their grant. So last year, we offered one middle school course, which was Automation and Robotics, and one high school course, which was Intro to Engineering Design. This year, we're going to be offering two courses at the middle school and two courses at the high school, as well as two modules in each of the grades, pre-K through five. So we now have pre-K through 12 curriculum in STEM. We have five teachers that went to training, they have to get a credential to be certified in order to teach these courses. We had two elementary teachers go to the training this summer, Kate Cormier and Christine Boudreaux. They will come back and teach a module that will qualify them to take an additional course, and they can then teach all of the remaining elementary teachers, and they're both on board doing that, so that'll be great. We hope to teach one to two modules at each grade level by the end of the year. Middle school, we have a new teacher, David Larson, who went and received training in design and modeling, so we're adding the design and modeling course, which really is the foundation course, so sixth graders and seventh graders will take that, eighth graders will continue to take Automation and Robotics, and then the plan is to add a third course, so that by the end of a three-year sequence, they've had one, you know, a sixth grade, a seventh grade, and an eighth grade course. In addition, Mr. Gagnon went to be trained on the Intro to Engineering Design, so he can take over that course at the high school, and Mr. Clapp was trained in Computer Science Principles, which is an additional course, so he's going to take over that course. The, one of the really good benefits that we just found out about is that the state has decided, as they should, to consider the high school Project Lead the Way courses as advanced coursework, which gives us a benefit in our accountability rating. So one component of the accountability rating for high schools is advanced coursework, that's typically things like AP courses, but these Project Lead the Way courses count for that, so we have two additional course offerings at the high school alone for that, so that was a fair bit of work that happened this summer with all of those teachers getting trained, they go to WPI for the training. I'm just looking at my notes to see if I got everything, I think I did. We have upcoming teacher leader training, the 26th and 7th, so two weeks from now, and we have upcoming new teacher orientation on the 19th and the 22nd, so it's going to be a busy few weeks.
One quick question on the civics, I know when they implemented the new core curriculum, there was talk about having a project, but it wasn't going to be rolled out unless it was funding that would come to the district, I'm assuming, since we haven't heard anything, that that, I did read somewhere that certain districts were getting some monies to implement some sort of project, and I'm assuming we weren't one of them, I didn't see, okay, so that's probably good, because another unfunded mandate that we don't have to deal with. Good, sounds like a very busy summer.
It's been a busy summer, pockets of really intense work happening, which is great.
All right, so just the last thing here, our subcommittees, which we will kick back up in September, so the next meetings for the academic administrative is Monday, September 9th at 9:00 AM. Our finance meeting, since we're still meeting as a committee of the whole, would be October 16th at 4:45 at Central Office. Facilities update, I don't know if we've got a, we've met yet, because I know it's been the summer, so I'm sure you guys will kick off at your next meeting. Policy, we'll do September 16th at 10:00 AM. Long-term planning will be September 16th at 9:00 AM, and we'll, and Lori, I know, if you want to just confirm, based on your schedule, if those will still work for you, then that's great. Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, Mr. Mason, you have a?
It's all wrapping up, like you said, we have open house in two weeks, technically, the project won't be done, actually, for almost a year, until the state comes in and does an audit, so we'll still be meeting as a building committee throughout the year.
Okay, and the PMS Building Committee, I know they have not met at all, and we'll address the heaters separately and go from there. We have no correspondence. Upcoming meetings, again, district-wide town meeting, next Wednesday, 7:00 PM. We will meet on Tuesday, August 27th, at 6:00, I have a bunch of agenda items for that. On Wednesday, the 28th, at 6:30, the Templeton members who can meet with the Board of Selectmen in Templeton to vote on the Monty Tech representative, can please show up there, we'll post a meeting, so if we have a quorum, we'll be covered. And that is it, our next regularly scheduled meeting, let's shout it, is September 18th here in the Kiva, and I know we are looking at some point to hopefully get a meeting scheduled over at TC, so we can meet there, I don't know if it'll be September, but maybe if not September, maybe October, that we can do a meeting there, so. If there's nothing else...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, all in favor. All right, that was unanimous, thank you, everyone. Thank you.